Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order is now Tuesday, January 19th, and we're at 8:37. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman Valistracei to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Item two is public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board? I don't see none. We'll move on. Item three is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Item three dot one is approval of the minutes of December 21st, 2015, regular meeting.
I would move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three dot two, approval of the minutes of January 4th, 2016, which was also a regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
No, moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. We have two additions to our meeting this morning. One is a request from Cliff Gurnham for approval of a state resolution for Baldwin window projects. I'd like to add that to three A.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we have a proclamation for mentoring. I'd like to add that to make that 10 dash A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take up Cliff's memo first.
Good morning. Thank you for getting me onto the agenda this morning. So, we are trying to push forward to do a window and door replacement project for the Baldwin Middle School. After review of the project, we feel that we could potentially get reimbursement from the state if we file it as an energy project, similar to what we did with Calvin Lee several years back. So, we're moving forward that process. We have most of the documentation ready to go to the state, so this is the last piece that needs to be finalized and approved. So, we're looking for the board to approve the three state required resolutions. The first is to establish a building committee or appoint a building committee, so you can potentially use a standing building committee if you feel that warrants that. Second, to authorize the preparation of schematic drawings and specifications. That was originally approved by the Board of Ed, and we've already actually done most of that, but we need the official approval here for the state. And thirdly, the filing of the grant application, which this gets attached to the minutes from this meeting, gets attached to that and gets sent to the state with the EDO 49. So, that's where we're at now. So, that's our request this morning.
Okay. For the purposes of discussion, I'll move that the board approve the three steps necessary for filing the grant.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Carl, then, are you in your motion, appointing the standing building committee and not a special committee?
Oh, yeah, I thought that the one motion covered all three points.
Correct, okay. It just, yeah, just clarification that you're using the existing standing committee, building standing committee.
Okay, good.
Which is, I presume, who oversaw the Lee project.
Correct.
We normally use all these types of projects.
That's head's case of establishing another committee.
Correct.
Do you like, a minor question I have is typically when we file a grant, we also authorize somebody to sign and...
That's right.
Yeah, so we authorize, and since this is technically a town building, we would authorize the first selectman to sign the grant.
Okay, I've signed them in the past, but we can...
Is that accurate, Pam?
I think that is accurate.
Okay.
I'll accept that as an amendment to the motion.
I would amend it that we add to three and authorize the first selectman to sign.
You accepted that, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. The motion is on the floor. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna take action against Cliff for citing prior grants.
Counsel is right there.
You'll have to give back the money, that's all.
He's gonna have to use his own money in that case. Item four, Finance Director receives a monthly report. Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheila.
We are halfway through the year.
Already, huh?
Yes, so our reports are as of December 31st. And on the revenue side, we've collected 63.9% of our budget. 64.6% was last year. We've made some adjustments on the tax side because I wasn't comfortable with the numbers that I saw even last month. They just continued to grow where I thought maybe that we better take a real detailed look at it early on in the year. So, we've made some adjustments, and now they are exactly correct where they should be, and they're really in line with last year. 64.2% this year, 64.8% last year. So, that makes more sense than what I was seeing prior to the corrections.
So, do you have a corrected sheet for us then?
You do have the corrected...
Oh, this is...
Well...
The one that was emailed to us.
It should be. It's 64.2% received on the tax collectors.
I have... Where am I here? I have, excuse me, wrong, I called up the wrong file. I'm sorry. There we go.
I just wanna make sure that you do have the right.
Yeah, I called up last month's file.
I didn't print it, but that's...
I'll have to share with you that way.
That sounds correct for me.
64.2% is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right, okay.
And other than that, the revenue on the department side is very strong. Fire department is supposed to be five months and not six, and they're right in line with where they should be at 40... Actually, they're way ahead of where they should be, I'm sorry, at 53.3%. And Town Clerk is ahead of last year, 57.3%, 48.2%. Building Department is 60.7%, and still that's not ahead of last year, but still very good considering last year was a strong year with the, you know, the bulk of the Guilford Commons.
Guilford Commons, yeah.
But they're still very strong at 60.7% this year.
I had a question when I reviewed this. The Town Clerk seemed pretty strong for last month, but you did check that out. That was correct?
Town Clerk, yes, should be fine.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And the chief is here regarding the fire department. Since they have a lag on collection, is this a substantial increase in volume, or have, is there a process change that allows them to collect faster?
I guess that's good, but that's not necessarily good because it's more ambulance runs. That's one of those good news, bad news items.
Okay.
Any questions on revenue?
No.
So, we can move to expenses. Expenses are fairly consistent with last year. 58.6% at the end of December, 58.9% last December. So, we're a little bit, it's confusing to say ahead or behind, but we're, you know, we're in a little better shape than we were last year at the end of December. But that's really driven by timing more than anything.
Wait till this weekend.
Oh, no. Let's take a look at Public Works. They're at 61% expended this year versus 64.5% last year. So, we're in good shape to go into the weekend. There really is nothing that's out of line that's different than, that I really need to bring to your attention here. Anything that's a little bit different than last year is timing related. Debt service, for example, that's gonna end up being what it is budgeted by the time we get to year end. Capital as well, slightly ahead of last year, but it doesn't matter because the departments end up spending their capital anyway by the end of the year.
Any questions on expense for the Finance Director? Want to look at insurance?
Let's take a look at medical. Medical is up a little bit from the first quarter, and I really think that's, well, in some ways it's due to the participants in the HSA plans who've used their deductible beginning of the year, and now the insurance is starting to pick up some more of the claims. If I can find that. So, I see it. I just think I did it. Thank you. So, we're basically at this point projecting a $376,000 surplus for the year. Our claims in December were one point, almost 1.2 million. It's the highest so far, but still July was 1.145, and November was 1.189, and we're 1.195. So, very, very consistent, but still just a little bit higher. The stop loss now is up to 455,000 that it's covered. Still, the good news is there's just a handful. I think there's maybe five or six claims that are in the category, the catastrophic claims, greater than 75%. And we still, you know, we still have six more months to reach the premium amount that we paid, which is the $880,000. But it's something that, you know, we feel that you can't look at in, you know, in a snapshot in a year. It's really, the stop loss is meant for more of a long-term savings.
And our fund balance seems to be in pretty good shape.
Well, I'm projecting a million-dollar fund balance by the end of December, should we have this $376,000 surplus this year. That's very healthy, that would be.
Yep. Any questions on Internal Service Fund there? Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
No, I think so.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? Thank you. Oh, by the way, the Finance Director will have budget books for us at the end of the meeting. Just...
Stop by.
Okay, pick them up, okay. For tomorrow's budget hearings. Okay, thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome.
Item five, Fire Chief, Charles Herschaff, five dot one, discuss and take possible action to purchase masks from shipments, equipment due to being a sole source vendor.
Morning.
How you doing?
We're looking to replace 40 Airpack masks at the price of $10,000. Shipment that the board remembers is a sole source vendor for Scott Airpacks, and also it can be purchased under state bid pricing. I don't think I put that on the purchase order. But basically, what I'm looking for is replace 40 Airpack masks.
Okay.
Two different accounts.
Two different accounts, okay.
That's why I moved that we... Purchase a mask from shipments, fire, and waive the normal bidding, you know, multiple requirements because it's a sole source vendor.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead.
Nope, that's okay. Doesn't matter.
Okay, motions been made in second. Any discussion? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Good morning.
Well, thanks for coming. Item six, Town Engineer, Jim Portley, six dot one, consider and take possible action to participate in kinetic mattress recycle program.
Good morning, again.
Mr. Portley, good morning. You're popular this morning.
Oh, yeah, always.
Joe says the camera wasn't on for the town meeting. You want to point out that Mr. Portley was, we had a town meeting prior to this and...
Well, he's always, he's always popular.
Always, always has been. Anyhow, this idea of recycling mattresses, at first things a little odd, but it has come, it's been a program that's been pushed by recycling agencies for quite a while. Came into effect this past July 1st, under the state laws. It's a non, we're not required to participate, but in the last couple of months, I've had a lot of pushback from both the folks that handle our bulky waste, because the mattresses normally go into the bulky waste container that it's transporting, and also from Covanta who takes the trash that goes into the hopper. A few mattresses have slipped into that, into the trucks that take it to the waste energy plant, and they've had problems dealing with them at the waste energy plant because they don't, they don't break up very easily. So, after discussions back and forth, we've decided that we make, it might make sense for us to try, and it's not, we're not obligated to stay with it. It's a program to recycle mattresses at no cost to the town, the employees, I mean, of the residents. They provide, under this program, this container that we can deliver up to 30 to 40 mattresses at a time. They take care of not only providing a container, but the hauling and disposal. Again, there's no cost to the town. Residents come in, would come in, bring their mattresses, they'd check in. Unlike the present procedure now where we weigh, we wouldn't weigh them, we would just direct them down to them. One of the employees at the transfer station would direct the resident to the trailer where it would be, they would have to take it out themselves and stack it in there. We'll have to make sure that at the end of a day or a few days, those mattresses get stacked properly, so we don't just have a mess. But it's a way for people to recycle. It's, we don't want to leave it open so that we would have commercial people coming there and bringing six or 10 or 12, which has been known to happen in the past, because we didn't have a control on it. They just went into the dumpster and they paid for them. This is a free, free service, so we want to put some controls on. I've talked to the people up at the, who operate this program, and they said you certainly can do that. You can set the controls you want, make, tailor it to your own needs. So, I would recommend the Board of Selectmen approve the designation of the transfer station as a collection site governed with, by two things. One, two rules. One, the collection site is available to residential customers only. I don't want anybody coming in from the outside. And two, upon inspection and approval of the transfer station employee, the offloading and placement of mattresses and box springs into the collection container be performed by residents as directed by the transfer station employee. We're not just gonna have somebody go and just dump them on the ground. You bring it in, you're getting a free service. You take it off your truck or whatever it is and put it in the container.
What do they do now? Now they just take it and dump it in that big thing?
Yes.
But they're still doing it themselves.
They're doing it themselves.
Anyway, so there's no difference really.
There's no difference at all.
Instead of, yeah, just putting it in a little different spot, so to speak.
Yeah, and if you saw the literature, they don't want all these wet mattresses and broken mattresses. That'd be a mess. People will be responsible for putting it in themselves.
How many mattresses do you think we have a month, like?
It varies. I talked to Ralph there. He says you might have a situation where 10, 12 come in a week, and then next week you have nothing, but then you have a big load. So, I guess right after Christmas, I guess a lot of people buy mattresses for Christmas for whatever reason. It's a bigger, bigger issue than I thought it was. It lasted for years. We just, they came in once in a while. It wasn't a big deal, but I guess I had a lot of advertising on TV about buying the proper mattresses, really having its effects. They come in quite often, so.
Jim, other than volume, is there a reason not to take mattresses from commercial? I mean, do they have another outlet for recycling their mattresses?
Yes, yes. They're tied in. They can, they can, they can be designated as their own recycler.
Okay.
They can have a container at their own site.
Okay.
Do the same thing.
But then they have to haul them somewhere.
Yeah, well, again, if they get, if they get...
Or they could get an equivalent.
Exactly.
Then you get it picked up.
I'd have it picked up.
Interesting.
Yeah, and they charge if we deliver it. They charge. We should buy a mattress.
Having bought a mattress, I know there's a charge for it.
You got the sleepy button.
Well, that was the whole point of the legislation, that the cost was gonna be passed on the consumer regardless, so, yeah.
Right. The way things are. Our transfer station has always been that way. Pay as you go. But here's a freebie.
So presumably that the charge that I paid when I bought a mattress before Christmas goes to the recyclers.
Yes.
They need to pass it on, and that's what pays for this service.
Right, exactly.
The insurance has to be more expensive, and it's gotta be longer.
It wasn't my bet. It was, it was for the grandchildren, but that's okay.
Okay, we need a motion then?
Yeah, I would move that we endorse this program. And if it turns out to be problematic, I assume you'll come back, but it sounds like a worthwhile venture.
Second. The motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay. Jim, we have one more, six point two, discuss and take possible action on a STEEP grant application for the Guilford Food Bank.
Right. Several weeks ago, there was a notice passed around about STEEP funds being available this year. Tammy in Social Services has been complaining about, you know, the capacity of existing food bank, and Steve Nyroff has pointed out a few structural problems that have come up in that bank, and issues that have occurred over the years. Because it is an old building. It was never designed to be a food bank. It's cut up, it's small, there's limitations on it. So, this was thought to be an opportunity rather than, and I think it is, I'm not sure it's on the long-term capital budget.
Yep.
Maybe to get money to build a new building. And I prepared an application. I talked to Tammy. She was like a bigger building, but I think this is something that could fit within the limitations of the grant. It's a $500,000 maximum grant to a small town. It's an opportunity, I think, using the site where we don't have to land costs to put a food bank there. There's no change in the way the delivery is made, where people can go there, but it would be a place where we could put a food bank and then either restore the old building or period time to what it was, which was a, it was an incubator and cremary for the old Governor Woodruff Farm. Might be interesting to do that as part of the overall idea that there's a park down there now with the foundation of the Governor Woodfield Summer House, Governor Woodruff Farm, or Summer House, I mean. So, it, we put, we put an application into the hopper. I talked to Joe, and he was kind enough to sign the application last week with the idea that it would be endorsed by the Board of Selectmen today. So, I recommend the Board of Selectmen vote to endorse the application for the $500,000 grant.
So moved.
Second. The application, the reason I signed it last week, the deadline was...
Right.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Gary?
Just one question and one, well, two questions, I guess. It refers to the Plan of Conservation Development adopted 724. That was by P and Z.
Yes.
It still has not come before the Board of Selectmen for endorsement.
Correct.
Hopefully, we can schedule that.
Correct.
And then secondly, and Jim and I have had this discussion, if there's a better plan, we believe that if the STEEP grant is awarded, it could probably be moved into an alternate site if there's a better idea for this.
Yeah, I think the language in the STEEP program allows flexibility.
Yeah.
Something else.
Yeah, we both...
But it would still be for the food bank, it would.
Right, right. It would still be for the food bank.
Wouldn't be for a garage, for a...
There are another, a couple of other, there are some other things that might work.
Correct, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item seven, Environmental Planner, Kevin McGee. Consider and take possible action on resolution of endorsement for the South Central Regional Council of Government's application for state regional performance incentive program, grant for Planometrics data development, and two, a regional open space inventory. Good morning again, Kevin.
Good morning. The, our local SCROG is again putting in for grant to the state for the Planometrics, for the JIS systems and regionally, regionally, to pick up building footprints, bridges, roads, that type of data onto the mapping system, which is data be invited also to the towns here. So, that's the first one they're doing. The application here that they submit has their, their cost basis included in it. So, do you want to do one at a time there, or do you want me to go ahead?
No, why don't you go over both of them?
And then the second one is for a newer program, which they're trying to also get money for, which is regionally classifying open space. A lot of the town maps and stuff just have it as town-owned parcels, and by class, get some sort of classification system. Guilford has a pretty good one here, and I hopefully look at trying to model ours, or try to push them how follow ours instead of going to something else in terms of classification of recreation lands, preserved lands, and municipal use lands. So, they're trying to get everything sort of in the same type of system in the region. It helps when planners and looking at maps at the state level and local levels of, there's town land in North Branford, but is that for their municipal use of public works building, or is that a preserved land for trails, something like that? So, getting a regional classification would help with this large-scale planning efforts there. And that also has all their cost backups, how they figured out how their cost is per town to show to the state. The Planometrics changed slightly from the one we looked at last year because it doesn't include the flight, because they're hoping to take advantage of the flight that's happening this March that was approved at the state regional level.
Flight?
Aerial flight.
Okay.
Which, the mapping part.
Yep.
Error photos and stuff, that's being taken care of at the larger SCROG level, COG level. So, they're hoping that being a lower cost grant this time, that hopefully they'd be successful in getting it. Like I said, it's about the third or fourth time I've been here for the same thing, and the state doesn't seem to be like the thought of this project, so they keep on rejecting it, so.
And as you can see, in the documentation, there's a comparison of the savings, really. If it goes through COG, it would cost, the first grant, a little over half a million dollars if the municipalities were to do it on their own. The total costs combined for all the municipalities would be over $800,000. So, there's definitely an advantage.
Of bundling, yeah.
Of bundling it together, and the COG doing it in cooperation with the municipalities. And the same thing for the other grant, which if municipalities did it independently, would be $360,000. And this is kind of mind-blowing. If the COG did it for the municipalities, it would be only $74,000. So, that's quite a savings.
Yeah, I mean, this is the...
And I can't understand the state rejecting this stuff. It just drives you nuts.
I know. No. I mean, the open space one is something which was, then, sort of in the Plan of Conservation Development is trying to categorize our, our open spaces and identifying. So, this kind of would help us in terms of, I think, to do the research into, my look into this here is that the research and the deed is making sure that it's, how it's been set aside. Is it then set aside as part of an open space set aside, or is it just the property that we have has been just basically a tax receipt from the town, so it can be used for any type of activity? So, my look at this is that they're gonna be doing that detailed investigation of the properties.
And all 15 towns are being asked by their legislative body to...
Approve this.
Approve this resolution.
And pass it on so they can file for the grant application.
Yep. Okay.
I would move that we sign the, sign the resolution of endorsement. Approve the resolution and sign it as appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, you know, it's certainly worthwhile. It sounds like the probability isn't extremely high, however.
I mean, the open space is a new one they're putting out there, so that might be a good thing, but the Planometrics...
Who votes on it ultimately? It's the executive branch that has to approve the funding?
Yeah, it goes into, I'm not sure, the, the agency, which actually they're signing off on this, but it's at the state level, and it's subject to this whole budget session up in Hartford.
Okay, so it may start on one side and then go to the other?
It's submitted to OPM, but, you know, I think it goes, it's not a bond issue. I think it goes to the legislature, and that's where it's issued, okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, item eight, In-House Counsel, Pam Milver, discuss and take possible action on a grant of limited right of first refusal by the Veteran of Forest... of limited right of first refusal by the Veteran of Foreign Wars Post 7666 of the Town of Gelford regarding the 104 Mill Street property. Morning, Pam.
Good morning. So by way of background, you remember from prior meetings, through the town's really participation, the VFW, the local VFW here, received a grant for $1,347,479, which, the purpose of the grant is to build a new VFW building at the site. And the state required the town's kind of participation in the documents. We've signed a three-way grant agreement, VFW, the state, and the town, set forth all the various obligations. And the town wanted to be, you know, protected for, you know, because of its participating in this manner for the benefit of the VFW. Some of the selectmen, you know, really raised that point that we wanted to make sure that we were protected and that our, you know, rights as a town are protected in participating in this manner. So the VFW is represented by Attorney Jeff Beatty, so Jeff Beatty and I negotiated this, it's a grant of limited right of first refusal. We've got a few things. One, this agreement sets forth the obligations of the parties to make it very clear that the VFW has, you know, most of the obligations under this three-way contract. They have to pay the invoices, they have to do the reporting. In addition, it talks about, basically, this is a 10-year amortization schedule on the grant. So similar to our science wing project, if for some reason the VFW disbands or doesn't do what it's supposed to do under this, to build the building that it's supposed to with these grant monies, the state has actually a lien on the VFW's property, and the state could take it back. So we want to be protected during that amortization period. And so during only the 10-year period, if for some reason the property is offered to a third party, you know, somebody approaches the VFW, they want to disband, the VFW state level body doesn't choose to retain the property because they have the first rights to it, the state and federal VFW bodies have the initial rights to the property. And if for some reason they did not want to retain the property for VFW purposes during this 10-year period and chose to market it and obviously receive the funds and use the funds for VFW programs in the future, we would have the right, they would offer, if they got an offer from a third party, we would have the right to match that offer. And that's what this is about. So, and it's a, it's a time period, they'd have to show us the written offer, we would obviously have to go through our town meeting procedure as an acquisition of a property. But we would have this right, this valuable right of at least being able to match it if we thought we could use the property for, you know, town purposes. You know, so this document has that right for that 10-year amortization period. It also just spells out, you know, if for some reason the VFW defaults in its obligations and we incur any kind of fees as a town to cure that default, we would have a lien on the property as well for the amount of that, the amount of out-of-pocket that we had in curing that default. And as I said previously, it also spells out exactly what the VFW is obligated to do and what the town is not obligated to do. And that's, that's it. So you're being asked to authorize the first selectman to sign the grant of limited right of first refusal.
So moved.
Second. Motion is made in second. Any discussion on it? Gary?
Yeah, the first thing that occurs to me, Pam, is that this gives us, if there is an offer made, and I want to go back to that topic too, but we have 60 days to exercise our option, and under our land acquisition process, that's, we could not do it, we couldn't do it in 60 days. But by the time we have public, you know, a town meeting to authorize the acquisition, by the time we create the funding mechanism to do it, I mean, assuming it's somewhere in the million-dollar range, it would go, if it's over a million dollars, it would have to go to a referendum, which had to be scheduled. So the 60-day number just doesn't, is impossible, as I see it.
Right. Does it say, Pam, let me look at it again.
Since we have 60 days.
Does it say that we have to tell them we want to do it? Like, like, let's say we say we want to do it, and then everything falls, does it mean we have to do, see what I'm saying?
I understand that, but we have, we have difficulty saying we want to do it if we don't have the mechanism to do it.
That's, well, not true.
Can we give notice in 60 days?
Pardon?
As long as we give notice in 60 days.
We just have to give notice that we're, and the town meeting could occur within that time period.
Correct. But if we need a referendum to fund it?
Well, no, we have to go to town meeting and then to referendum.
You definitely have to do town meeting first.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, our process requires an independent appraisal, which can't be, which takes some time to develop.
Well, there's nothing in the charter that talks about that. I mean, what you're doing in a right of first refusal is you're deciding to match that offer. So it doesn't really, the appraisal pieces.
But how can we match that offer without going through our process?
I mean, I'm not saying that it's.
Yeah, but it says.
Wouldn't be something you would maybe want to do, but the argument with a right of first refusal is the market value has already been set because you've got a third party that's willing to pay that money for it. And so while you, regardless of what the appraisal is, what you're going to purchase is, is the offer amount. You have to pay that amount, you can't, let's say the offer was a million dollars and the appraisal came in at 500, doesn't matter. You need to, that's what a right of first refusal is, you've got to match that.
I understand that we can make an offer that's different from the appraisal, but I don't have the documents in front of me, but I don't think we can go through the town meeting process or the land acquisition process without an independent appraisal.
I think we'll have to table that and talk.
We've paid numbers other than the appraised amount.
Right.
With some justification prior.
This is a little different, because this is, as I say, it's a right of first refusal. So it's, you match the offer, that's the only thing on the table.
I understand that in order to do it, you have to match it, but we still have a process that requires an appraisal and requires a town meeting and may, depending on the amount, require a referendum. And I, you know, I think it's, it's problematic to issue a, the option, because while waiting for that process, the buyer might go away, and then we'd be subject to liability because the buyer goes away because we've, we've delayed this whole process.
Well, I can certainly ask for more time, if, I think that's what your point is, and I can certainly ask that. You know, you, there's always a yin and yang to it, because if you're on the other side, the VFW side, if that time period's too long, then they don't want to grant you that right because they've lost their, their fish that they've caught, you know, their offer.
I understand that.
So that's always the situation with it. If it's too long, then the right won't be granted.
Right.
You know, we can certainly table it, and I can go back and see if they'll agree to a longer time period, given your concerns.
The, my second question is, the blanks that are in here in terms of the debt that's on it in the Schedule A and Schedule B, have they been provided or?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, not yet, yeah.
So we don't know what that liability necessarily is.
I know, just, Jeff had said it wasn't, it wasn't a lot, so, you know, I don't have the exact amount. It's some old loan that's been on there for a long time, I guess.
So I'd ask that we at least table it for the time being, and I'd like to ask.
I withdraw my motion. You move it to table?
Move to table.
Move to table.
Second.
To see if we can get a longer time period.
Yep, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Sure.
Okay, item nine, appointments and resignations. Nine dot one, act on an appointment of John Hensington to the Veterans Advisory Joint Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay. Ten, requests for the use of town property. We have ten one and ten two.
I would make a motion that we approve the four requests for use in ten one and ten two, and the sign on ten two, but make a note that the three requests by the Shoreline Chamber ultimately will also require them, because they indicated they're doing signs, they'll ultimately have to come back with sign requests.
Good point.
The form they filled out does not deal with sign.
Right.
So it's the four uses and the one sign as described in the agenda.
Okay, Tracy has all that. Motion's made, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 10A, it goes back to what we.
Right.
The proclamation on mentoring, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please don't leave without signing the proclamation. Item 11, correspondence, Public Works Department monthly report. Hope next month, you know, the time is just, it's about the same. And then in your packet is the building report, and that report is not as complete, they had some computer problems, but I'm told that next month we will have a completed report, so. Old business is item 12. You all receive a email from me with the good news that we did receive good news on the Quantapod grant that we submitted. It's not the amount we had requested, it was 20,000 instead of the 34,000 we had requested. That was for the cleanup of Lake Quantapod. Again, that is only going to help us for one year. Keeping in mind that the grant award was reduced somewhat because the state felt that the estimates we had put in for the herbicides were very high. But, you know, look, we will take what we can get, number one. Number two, I want to thank Kevin McGee and Rick Maynard for all their work in putting together that grant, they did a very good job on that. It still does not help us with the long-term issue of solving this problem, but we keep moving along and working on that. Okay, so, Gary?
Was the decrease, since I saw the overall memo, there were more grant applications than funding was provided. I wasn't.
There always are.
I wasn't clear whether it was reduced because of the, the funding wasn't available, or they actually thought the project could be done for less.
The total legislation had provided for $150,000 statewide, and there was, as you can imagine, we put in for, you know, 34,000, there was a lot more submissions than would cover 150. So they looked at it, they being the state, a lot more critical than they would normally look at. But they also said that the estimates we got for the herbicide was very high. So we're going to go back and sharpen our pencils and tell the vendors to sharpen their pencils. And I want to thank our state delegation, particularly Representative Scanlon and Candelora for diligently following up on this grant. They did a good job up there.
I just wasn't sure whether they chinsed us on a moat or they actually had, you know.
A little of both.
A little both.
A little both, okay. Keeping in mind the state is in bad shape money-wise also, so, okay. Okay, that was that. Any other old business, anybody? Gary?
Yeah, I would ask, I would direct a question to Jim Portley. We approved a while back a process which you were intimately involved in, in helping the Greenway Trail design, the trail from the East River Bridge essentially to the diner. Can you update us on the status of that and what, where we are on that project?
Certainly. The director told me. The designs have been submitted. We have final comments back on the design. We would expect to have those comments addressed and returned to the state by mid-March. So that design phase is completed. We have been in contact with the agency that is handling the, is the liaison between the state and ourselves. They've asked us to come up with a program of tree removal for this spring, which we've done, we've identified all the trees that would need to be removed to build the trail. That has been submitted to them. I'm not sure if it's the state wants to pay for those trees, or would they be in our contract. We have also gone out to vendors to get prices for removal of these trees, so we have the information if ever is brought to, to the table. Right now, the estimate for the construction is in the range of about $700,000. It's excessive what we first thought, we thought it would be about a little bit more than 500,000. We have through the grant program, $484,000 in funds. So we've advised the Shoreline Greenway Trail group that of the shortage, asked them to see if they have some funding that they could, they could access to complete that one section. These are all estimates, obviously, they're not, we haven't gone to bid. But there is a discrepancy in what money we have and what, what it will take to actually build this trail at this section. So that's where we stand. We're going to get our, we're going to get our responses back to the DOT by mid-March, and then we'll be in a position then to, once the funding comes through, to do the project.
You had initially indicated, obviously based on estimates, that you could go the entire route on that funding, and that's apparently changed.
Changed.
To a substantial, why?
Part of the reason is that we had first viewed the trail as something, or eight-foot wide trail, the Greenway Trail Committee wanted a 10-foot wide trail. You take over that length, it's not just the cost of construction, but it involves retaining walls, other elements that had to be designed into the project that were not first anticipated. So those, those elements, it's a wider trail, you know, it's been, it's been, it seems like three or four years now since we first started, so it's, costs have gone up, just the natural process.
Okay, I mean, I know you've put in a lot of work, and what was, you had a lot of meetings with the residents in the area.
We met with every resident.
What was presented to them? Was it the eight-foot trail, or I mean?
Well, we didn't, I don't know if we ever went into the specifics, we just talked about a trail. I think we did talk about eight-foot, but it was, I didn't, there was no, there was no real discussion on the actual width, it was kind of just the trail. And there was, there was almost universal acceptance by the residents that they would like to see something there, so we, we didn't have it. Nobody was getting really antsy about the width of the trail. They were more concerned about what it would look like and what kind of features it would have.
So, okay, so I guess we're, there's an obligation on their part to raise money?
We only have.
The town was prepared to put in any.
The town hasn't put any money into it.
Other than a lot of effort on your part and your staff's part.
Right, yeah. We haven't funded it all. There's no other source of funds. The state would not allow us to say, okay, go out to bid and build three-quarters of it. They want a project that has a discreet, beginning and discreet end. They don't want to end in a big block someplace, which is reasonable, and they see the juncture of tann marsh and. And they see the juncture of Tannemash and 146 and Route 1 as a reasonable juncture for the, for the trail. Diner has parking, people can go there and they can walk. And so this is, it was not unreasonable requirement that they establish that. So at that point, if, if we don't have the money, we certainly can't go out to bid. So, but, but we've got our approvals, we do what we're supposed to do. It's all we can do.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. So if you all want to chip in or cookie sales over there.
I think that's in the cards.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
On the new business, just a reminder that tomorrow, 8:30 in this room, and the following day in this room, that's January 20th, 21st, 8:30, we begin our budget hearings, which is the presentation of the department budgets to this board for the 2016, 2017 budgets. So that's, begins tomorrow, and it will be taped. So public will be able to view the presentations on VCTV. Okay. Any other new business?
Joe, can I go back to old business for a second?
You certainly may.
At the last meeting, there was a public forum item, and we typically don't comment on public forum. But I would, I would, it was in the minutes, and I would like to, to respond. And it dealt with an issue of lack of transparency on the, on the pages lane issue.
Go ahead.
Enormous statement. There was a statement made that taxpayer funding was used for the grant that was discussed in that comment. And while I understand we are state taxpayers, I would like to clarify that it was not town taxpayer money, but that grant, that study was paid for by a state grant, not by Guilford taxpayers. And I would also reiterate the comments made by Selectman Balistracei that there are certain issues, there was, there was no attempt to hide negotiations or do anything, but there are certain issues that involve negotiations that need to be discussed in executive session. No decisions were made. But we talked about a strategy for potentially utilizing this project. Any actions that would take place on that or any uses of that property would certainly be fully disclosed in public, and discussions of funding would need to be dealt with in full, open session. So there was no attempt to, to hide anything or create any secret negotiations. It was merely a discussion of strategy.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up, that's good. Anybody else? Just for the selectmen, February 16th is a scheduled regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It also, at 8:30, it conflicts with the annual Council of Small Towns annual meeting, which I am attending. Like, I've spoken to the other three selectmen, Cindy, I haven't talked to you yet. I'd like to move the meeting to either 3:00 PM that afternoon or the next day. Please let me know what's good for you.
Either way, doesn't matter. I'm going to be away for, at a legal convention for a long weekend, so I, I was going to be missing that meeting anyway.
Okay, so, whatever we decide, we'll make it a special meeting.
Yes, I will probably be missing that meeting. My schedule currently...
You and I and Charlie.
If you take enough people, I'll be back in the second team.
Back to a three-member board.
Okay. Okay, so that, that's going to make it easy to get three of us together then, okay. Tracy, we'll, we'll work that out then. Okay. Public forum? Anybody wishing to address the board on any issue for three minutes? See none, we'll move along. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Adjourned at eight, 9:30, second.
8:30 tomorrow?